design review and conditional use permits. The applicant, Cyrus Chung, who is also the architect of this project, along with their team, is here tonight, as am I, to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. Just to orient you with the site, this area is zoned, single-family residential. There are three parcels that will be merged, as there are 50 existing parking stalls on site, and there is an existing church facility, as well as some detached, like a social hall, as well as the office building, all for the uses of the church facility. After the merger, all the parking stalls will be shared among all users of the site. And the surrounding area consists primarily of single-family homes. Here are photographs and an aerial image of the existing site. As you can see here, the East Bay Formation United Methodist Church, that will remain as part of this project, the pastor's home in the back of the site, and there is an existing social hall building, which will also remain. And then the building that you see fronting Sunnyvale next to the church, which I have identified with the arrows, will be demolished as part of this project, and the new community center will be located in this place. So as mentioned earlier, the 3,000-square-foot office building that's fronting Sunnyvale will be demolished for construction of the 4,500-square-foot, one-story community center building, which will offer Taiwanese cultural classes for adults, and after-school program for K through eight students, as well as memorialize or legalize an existing church that's been operating on site. The project also includes widening of the existing driveway, relocation of existing ADA stalls, and new public walkways, and new landscaping entries, as well as new signage. And just to go into the business operating plan, the Taiwanese-American Culture Center will operate from 9:00 a.m. to noon, Monday through Fridays. The activities include cultural enrichment and language classes, or other such classes that are tailored for adults and seniors. And the after-school program will be tailored for K through eight students, operates from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There is a pickup and drop-off area that will occur by the parking stalls nearest to the courtyard, and I will show this in the upcoming slides. The activities offered, again, are language and dance classes, arts and crafts, and other group activities. The maximum number of students, or the cap on this, would be 33 students. The applicant is anticipating 20 students and four teachers. And the existing church operates only on Sundays. So tonight, the planning commission will be considering several conditional use permits, the cultural institution use, which defines the community culture center, the after-school program, as well as legalizing the existing religious assembly use, and the design review for the community center building, to basically, essentially, the site layout and the building design, as well as the new landscaping. And the proposed signage and the existing parking on site does comply. Therefore, no amendments or modifications are required for that. And just to go over design review commission's comments, the design review commission did review this project at the May 7 study session hearing, and overall did like and appreciate the project, however, had some further comments to really enhance the landscaping plan, increasing the tree size to 24-inch box, provide more site lighting details, use hardscape/landscape details to really create a connectivity between the buildings on site, as well as a acoustic study for the HVAC, and mitigations of any potential noise impacts from that HVAC equipment. Also, to consider a taller fence or wall to conceal the proposed equipment, and to enhance the blank wall along the street-facing elevation with either a design element such as transom windows, or enhance the landscape plan, or incorporate some sort of public art feature that would celebrate the Taiwanese culture. And here you see a look at the existing site layout, as well as the proposed. Here's a closer look. Essentially, as you can see, the overall site will remain the same. The site will still continue to access from the existing driveway on Sunnyvale. The change is essentially in the blue, where the driveway will be widened to comply with current code requirements, as well as new five-foot-wide walkways that are leading from the sidewalk to the new building, along both the west and the east sides of the site. And then there's a new courtyard space around the community center and the existing social hall building. It'll all be finished with permeable pavers that'll essentially tie into the new walkways. Moving on into the parking, as mentioned earlier, there are a total of 50 parking stalls on site. The anticipated parking for all uses required on site is listed on this slide. And as mentioned earlier, the church community center and the after-school program are operating at separate times, so there will be no overlap in the hours of operation, and that, of course, would not result in any parking demand on site. And here's the floor plan, which does feature double-entry doors that open into a central lobby, providing access to that large library auditorium space and classrooms. And to the left of the entrance is the layout, which includes offices, storage areas, and restrooms. And I wanted to highlight the mechanical equipment and trash enclosure that's located in that fenced-off area along the east corner of the site. It is highlighted blue on this exhibit. And design review commission did request a acoustic assessment to verify that if the noise generated from this equipment would result in any impacts. So an acoustic assessment is included as attachment six of your packet tonight, and it did conclude that the equipment noise levels will not exceed the 65 dB8 threshold, which is the acceptable noise or applicable in the residential area. And I also wanted to point out, the design review commission also stated that in order to conceal this trash enclosure area, as well as the equipment, I believe the equipment is five, five feet tall, five or six feet tall. So the applicant is proposing a seven-foot-tall stucco wall, as well as a metal gate to conceal that from view. And moving on to the building elevations, this is the north building elevation that's going to face Sunnyvale Avenue, which is street-facing. The north elevation initially had a 45-foot-tall, like, 45-foot-wide blank wall, and I'm sorry, I should have provided an existing and proposed. I believe the applicant has a presentation, so I'm hoping they show the changes. But per DRT's comment, the wall has been revised to add two new window openings, as well as a 33-foot-wide public art mural. The mural does use mountain imagery to reflect Taiwanese cultural identity. However, after discussion with the public arts manager, the public arts manager did point out that they would like to see an art piece that can live beyond the scope of the project. If this, hopefully, this project continues to flourish, but if, you know, there were a new tenant to move into this building in the future, should have something that has, the image should be something that's neutral, and mountains, I believe, kind of fit well with any type of use. So the, again, this is a very preliminary design, so this will be the, they'll work with the public arts manager to finalize this design further. And here is the south elevation. This is the front entrance facing the internal parking lot. It consists of a glass storefront, windows with a sloped roof. The exterior facade consists of gray and white stucco, and the, this was intentionally placed on the entrance of the building, was intentionally placed to be on the south side, to really maintain a low profile from the neighboring residences. And here is the west elevation that's facing the existing building, and east elevation that's facing the closest residential property. The R8 zone requires a five-foot side yard setback. The applicant has provided a 15-foot setback from this building to the property line along the east, giving the sensitivity closer to a residential property. And there is a requirement in the Walnut Creek Muni code that does require that when there's a non-residential use, which is classified as a commercial or community use in this instance, that an eight-foot-tall masonry wall is required. The applicant tonight is requesting a waiver, and I believe that addendum has been provided to you today. The applicant is essentially asking for the waiver, as they're indicating that it is a low-noise-generating use compared to some more active commercial uses, such as a fitness center or a restaurant that would be located to next to residential properties. And that's probably really the intent of the Muni code as well, that when there's a commercial use abetting residential uses, to kind of buffer that noise or that type of activity. But in this case, we see that's, given that the hours of operation are till 5:00 p.m., the latest at 5:00 p.m. shouldn't be a concern. And staff has also, staff supports the request, and we have, in the past, also allowed these type of approvals, but of course, it's under the discretion of the planning commission. But the code does say this requirement may be waived, or the height reduced if the commission makes the finding that such eight-foot fence or wall is not necessary for the protection of such adjoining properties. And here are some renderings, really showing the way this new community center will fit within the context of the site. Here's a closer look. Again, to the right on the top is to the right is the church, and I believe they've incorporated a crosswalk, so there's a little more connectivity. Some more renderings, again, how it relates to the existing neighborhood. And now, moving on to the landscaping plan, the applicant is proposing two new 24-inch box olive trees, or I believe there's three tree species that they've provided in their landscape palette, so of any of those trees, if there's a preference by the commission, you can state so. But the reason for the change was because the design review commission said to up the size of the trees from a 15-gallon to 24-inch box and change the species. And again, I think the applicant could go into more detail on that. And there are three existing trees on site that will remain. One is the street-facing Deodoro cedar tree, that's right in the front, facing Sunnyvale. And this project does comply with the city requirements, and does qualify for a Class 32 CEQA exemption, as it is a in-bill development. And the project was designed to meet the city's design standards. The project also meets the zoning standards, such as floor-area ratio, building height setbacks, and parking standards. And the Attachment 1 draft resolution, that's been included as part of the packet, really outlines or addresses all of the findings that are required to approve the three conditional use permits tonight. And if needed, I could elaborate, but I'm just going to move on for now. So tonight, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution determining the project is exempt from CEQA, as well as approving the conditional use permits and design review for the proposed community center. And with that, I do conclude my presentation, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Let me start. The, does the, do the conditions on the conditional use permits, do they restrict the hours to the hours listed, or is it just, is there some flexibility with that?
There's a little flexibility, and again, this is case by case, but the reason we added that it needs to comply to Exhibit B, which is the business operating plan, and if it's, if they make minor adjustments or changes, we can call it substantially compliant and allow them to make those changes. However, we've seen in the past, sometimes if we don't add that condition, we've had businesses really change the operating hours, increase the student count, or go from K through eight through high school students, so like, really, a change, you know, or alteration that could impact what we're approving tonight. So in that case, they would have to come back before this commission for a modification. But if it's minor changes, and that's why the conditions are, the applicant could reach out to us if there's minor adjustments, which we can approve administratively, otherwise they would have to come back to this commission for changes.
Any questions? Commissioner Kwak.
So I just wanted to clarify, in the staff report, it did mention one of the design elements was the lighting preferences between the two styles. Could you speak a little bit more to that, please?
Yes, I think I have that slide. So if you see Candidate 1 is the upper slide at the top, and Candidate 2, they gave two options, is the bottom one. The difference is, Candidate 1 is really what complies with the city's design guidelines, which really, because it minimizes glare and light spill, and also provides a soft illumination versus the other one, it kind of spreads out, spreads out further. So that's what we've stated in the report. There's not really a conditional use, sorry, a condition of approval, but there is a condition of approval that says that the lighting should be pointed downwards. And based on what they've given us in these images, I believe Candidate 1 really meets that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Strongman.
The applicant has requested the variance on the fence. If we should grant that, how, where do we work that into our resolution?
So it'll be, we could strike out the condition of, the condition number three, and we can have it to read, the applicant may construct a seven-foot-tall wood fence along the east property line in lieu of the required eight-foot-tall wall. We could just add that as a condition. There's no really specific, I mean, we can, we could modify the...
We can modify, and the commission can adopt the resolution as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And second question is, it appears from the drawings that the improved landscaping does not extend to the church, nor through the new lighting to the church. Is that the way it is, or can we have that extended to the...
That is what's being proposed, but again, the applicant will come up and have a presentation, so maybe we can...
Okay, I'll wait till...
Save that question for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions. Any questions of staff?
All right. I have a quick question. I don't know if it's better served by the applicant, but in the Attachment 4 business plan, I know we're not looking at it right now, but the drop-off section, I'm just curious about the flow. I stole it from you. The, it kind of looks like you drive in, you drop off, and then there's no roundabout necessarily, but if I'm driving, I have to go through what looks like the parking lot and then kind of jog back around, right? Like, for instance, Heather Farm, right, the new building, there's a, you just drive off, drop your kid off, and you're on your way, but we look like we're driving through the parking lot, and I just want to clarify that that's...
Correct. So during my conversation with the applicant, it was my understanding that they would park the vehicles and then walk the children to the area, but I see what you're saying. But I see what you're saying, there's like this squared-off red area that's showing a drop-off zone. So I will have the applicant really elaborate that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Get ready.
The only other thing I had that wasn't already covered was that I noticed a note about seeking city guidance about the outdoor play area on the grass. I was wondering if you had any responses to that.
Yeah, it's not a requirement. It was just a question that was raised by city staff that if there's kids there, they want to get out of the community center and go outside. Is there a place that you can have them, so they have a grassy area in the back? And I believe, is it enclosed? There's a section of it that's enclosed? Yeah, there's a fence around it, so that, that would probably be sufficient.
Nothing further than I will open the public hearing, and the applicant has ten minutes to present.
Commissioner, good evening. My name is Daniel Ko. I'm the one who started the whole thing four years ago, four years ago. So I thank you for all the city commissioner, consider our project. It's such been very, very tough job for me. I have to raise every penny away, nor given any fund, any foundation, anything. But we feel that we'll do something for the purpose of this mission.
Please peek into the mic. Thank you.
So when I start this whole thing, I want our vision, it is, we want to create a permanent home for East Bay Taiwanese-American. We have a three mission. We want to transport Pasang Taiwanese culture heritage, which including our value, our democracy system for the generation to come. Not only that, we want to translate, transport this heritage mission to the surrounding American community. Number three, we want to use this building to foster opportunity for the United Massachusetts of Taiwan, who have been there almost thirty years ago, thirty years ago. So because of this mission, I gather people November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So this is my mission, my, our mission, our teamwork, and I'm really hope the commission would grant us permission to build this building. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cyril Chung. I am the architect of the Taiwanese-American Cultural Center of East Bay. It's my honor to stand in front of you today to present this very exciting project for our community and hopefully for Walnut Creek as well. So Dr. Ko has been an inspiration and a very important person in this process. He has gone through some of the goals that he wants, we want to achieve in front of you. There is a sizable Taiwanese community here in the East Bay, and unfortunately, there is no place that they could, could call their permanent home. So we want to build something for them that could last for the next forty, fifty years for the older generation, as well as for the younger generation to enjoy. So I'm not gonna go through the technical aspects, since Mr. Gil has covered most of them. I'm gonna give you some background of how we come up with the concept today. Dr. Ko has gone through some of his goals, so I'm not gonna repeat this. I'm gonna jump straight to here. So the building itself is, is very simple, right? Basically, there is the main auditorium or library, which could be partitioned off to create two additional classrooms, and then there are two permanent classrooms. There is an administration office, and then there is also an office for the pastor. Just one thing I want to clarify is that this project is not being funded by the church. The church and our organization, organization are actually two different entities. We have very, very good relationships. A lot of members, basically, they, they, they affiliate with the church. And the church, basically, come to an agreement with our organization to use the land to build this community center. And that is to answer your question, one of the question, why, how comes the landscape does not extend over to the church side? Is that our site is actually limited to this eastern portion. And there is no indication from the church whether they want to improve the site as well. So the most we could do is try to improve our site as much as possible, and then the church could decide later on whether they want to do something to improve the site as well. So hopefully that answered your question. Aesthetics, we understand our building is in the middle of the residential neighborhood. So aside from trying to create a distinct style, we want to blend in well and be respectful, respectful to the peacefulness, the quietness, and the building scale of the neighborhood. We also know that our building is right next to the church. Even though it's not associated with it necessarily, we want to create a building form that share a similar palette, scale, and building form as well. And of course, lastly is, is where do we draw our inspiration? And, and the next few slides will show you. We want to draw inspirations from the Taiwanese geography, as well as from our local California geography, because this building is called Taiwanese-American Cultural Center, right? We want to find something that could create that link between the two different cultures. So the overall strategy of the building is to divide the building into the street side, the north side, and then the interior side. We believe that is important, again, because it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We want to be respectful. We don't want to create a scene or too loud that the neighbors could complain. So the inspiration that we got is mountains and forests. As you can see, that the, just the position between the north and then the south elevation. And I'm gonna explain this a little bit more. Mountains and forests, why? Well, on, on, on the upper left-hand side, you see Mount Diablo, which is right in the middle of, or next to Walnut Creek. And then in Taiwan, it is a very mountainous island nation. There are lots of mountains. So this particular photo is called Adishan, is one of the most famous tourist attraction in, in Taiwan. So we thought there are some parallels between what we have here and what is in Taiwan. And then the slides at the bottom show obviously the old redwood forest that we have in California, as well as similar forests, I mean, not redwood, but cedars in Taiwan. So we thought we could use this as an inspiration to create the building form and the overall aesthetics of the building. So as you can see, on the north side, basically, it is supposed to be a little bit more rugged and more solid with punched windows that will fit well into this residential neighborhood, quieter and more subdued tone. The scales, the walls have been scaled down to fit the neighborhood versus the south side, which is warmer, more transparent, more active, and, and more welcoming. And we use timber numbers, columns on this side to have, it's a suggestive, suggestive of, you know, the tall trees that we could find in California, as well as in Taiwan. So that's kind of the inspiration, and, and we hope that this distinction could basically show our respect to the neighborhood that we want to blend in, we want to be a good neighbor, and also give this building a, its own distinctive style. So as you can see, again, these are the, just the position of the north and the south elevation. I apologize, I don't have the elevation before where we don't have this mural. So as part of the public arts requirement, as well as to break up the long forty-five-feet-long facade, we propose doing a mural. We are going to set up a special arts committee within our organization in the process of soliciting artists to do this. So what you see here is basically just a very preliminary concept. We are still exploring what we could do on, on this particular wall. And then this is just an interior shot of the auditorium. And I'm not gonna spend too much details on this. These are some of the things that we have addressed, that we hear from the design review committee. I will let you ask a question if, if anyone is particularly concerned about any of these. But we believe our documents have addressed all of this, breaking up the north wall, the plant species, the acoustical concern, the drop-off area. By the way, the drop-off area, yes, it, it works exactly like you mentioned. You probably have to draw someone, go to the street, and come back. And it is done because we are very constrained in terms of parking lot. Basically, there is not much room for us to expand the parking lots without reducing the parking spaces. So this is the compromise that we are taking right now, and hopefully that would work with you. And we create a crosswalk. We have side lightings on both sides. So it's, it, it creates a little bit of visual connection between the church and our building. As mentioned, the, the two buildings basically operate independently. But we do think that such little bit of gesture could help create a visual connection between the two buildings. And then on the east side, regarding the fence, there is actually an existing, probably a twelve-foot-tall hedges in, in pretty good condition. And that's why in the original summit, we did not propose doing a fence there. We believe that the hedges itself, not only does it look fairly pretty, it, it actually does serve the function of providing privacy to both sides of properties. So that kind of concludes my presentation. I want to show you an animation. It's just a single, one-minute clip, so it's gonna be real fast. Do we have audio? Okay. Thank you. That concludes our presentation today, and I hope that we could earn your endorsement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for the applicant?
Oh, can I take an opportunity to introduce? We have Kelly and then Jeannie.
Vice President.
Nice to meet you.
This is the button I want to pass on to her.
Actually, Kelly, why don't you introduce us?
Hi, nice to meet you. Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you. My name is Kelly, and it's a blessing to be part of this project. And to me, as a first-generation Taiwanese-American, I would like to take this opportunity, hopefully to grant your permission to have this project approval for us to build, because it is a, it is an honor to be part of this community. And then we hope, once we grounded in this place, and we're gonna invite all different culture to enjoy Taiwanese-American. And for us, it's a, it's a win-win situation. And then I'm just happy that I have this opportunity to be part of it. Thank you.
Jeannie is the C, Construction Manager.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Wong. I'm the construction project manager, and I'm second-generation Taiwanese, so my parents are from Taiwan. I was born in the U.S. And I'll be working very closely with all subsequent coordination for design and pre-construction permits, everything that's needed, so we can build a very beautiful and successful project here. I'd like to introduce Kathy Rai. Come, come up.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rai. I'm a registered professional engineer and also certified lead accredited professional. So we want to create something and build something that Walnut Creek, the city, can point to and say, hey, this is how we want to maintain climate ordinance. Because I did go through your ordinances, I'm looking to, in the DD phase, use engineered wood, cross-laminated, cross-laminated timber and mass timber, which is not only engineered wood, it's more dimensionally stable, but it's also more sustainable, because it basically takes younger trees, but it also creates really clean, beautiful surfaces. And those are the types of sustainability components that I plan to. I'm also a licensed general contractor, so with this integrated process, we would also like to explore putting in more sustainable features. So welcome, feedback anytime, and thank you for listening. Yeah, I'm also a second-generation Taiwanese-American. I'm a third-generation builder. My grandfather, his brothers, and his cousins built some of the wealthiest parts of Taipei. So I am invoking my inner grandpa. Thank you for welcoming us. That's right, from Pittsburgh. So yes, he, I have a face to keep up here.
All right, questions? Commissioner Cound.
First of all, I just want to say congratulations for all that you've accomplished so far. I mean, that's a tremendous amount of work, fundraising, community building, planning. I was, I was looking at the materials that we received and some of the, the videos that were shown of the community events that you have held. It's just a beautiful thing that you have done all of this here in Walnut Creek for the community. So thank you for that, yes. And I want to say, I'm, the design is just so beautiful. I love the, the mountains and the trees and the, the natural light coming in. So I guess my questions would be two things, I think, just from one thing that was just said around sustainability. I know there's like LEED certifications and things like that. I don't know if that's something that you're, you're seeking with this building as far as sustainability. And then my other question is just more around the program. How you came to determine, you know, that this would be an after-school program for elementary school kids, and sort of which schools are they coming from? Do you already have a partnership with local elementary schools that these kids would come from?
What we want to do is to up the, up the school program, actually offer this from twelve to five, Monday through Friday. And Saturday, we want to open the center to the grown-up, offer so-called Taiwan Center, which will teach adult, Mandarin, Taiwan, and Taiwan history. This is open to, that's a Saturday. Of course, Sunday is for church use, you know, Sunday school and church going. So there is no overlap at all. Another thing I want to mention is, because this is, I recommend my daughter, my team member, the daughter, they are second generation here. They say that would not only want to serve Taiwanese-American, you want to serve American people very strongly. She said, we will have to offer field trip to the American school, theoretically invite them to learn Taiwan. This is my second-generation suggestion. I feel so good of the whole thing, as in that's my mission statement. Anyway, I was moved by my daughter's second-generation suggestion. Thank you.
And I'd also like to add, I mean, it's so beautiful, beautiful, you know, the vision, but, and there's, there's actually a lot of potential for other things. There's a, there are, you know, a lot of different, there are some activities that don't have a home, including like a Taiwan youth summer camp. So I don't know if it's possible, we can expand programming, you know, as, as it's feasible for different ages, different activities, maybe different outings, and especially field trips for, for schools to come to the center, but also for, for people in the community to go visit Taiwan, or to, to learn about Taiwan, or to come, you know, celebrate with us. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I also am excited about the building and gratified to see the work that's gone into planning for it. I had a specific question about entitlement to build. So for example, I have experienced working.
So, for example, I have experience working with a church that gave land to develop affordable housing. What is the relationship that gives you the authority to build on your site with the church? Is there a lease, a partnership agreement? I mean...
To answer your question, we will draft a lease and then sign with UNC, so that will guarantee us 40 or 50 usage of that building.
Yes. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Also renewable, regardless what happens to the church.
And you'll be here to make sure it's renewed.
We have to take care of our own cost.
Right, right.
Another thing, I really want to say something about this. My vision on this from the day one, I want to have this building completed off by solar panel, solar energy. I don't want, I want to minimize the fixed costs, you know, fixed costs, right? So that in the future building, when the operation building, there's hardly any fixed costs. It'll be 100% offered by solar panel. We also want to install storage, so that, you know, even if we don't have the solar energy, so we want to generate it as 60 from the energy storage. We also want to use hip pump. So it would be very, very modernized, and for this, again, not only for the future operation, but also really good for the environment. We don't have any natural gas.
Thank you. Commissioner Kound.
So I have a question about the lighting options that we're looking at. Do you have a preference between the two options that were in the presentation? If we're up to you?
You talked about the site lighting?
The lighting that would unite the, yes, the site lighting.
The lighting, we, I, actually, I don't have a particular preference. I think either one would work well with the building. We are looking for something that is relatively simple in design, and I believe these, both of these would work. So we're not necessarily in favor of one or the other. I mean, we are looking forward to your recommendation.
All right. Thank you.
I'm also part of the International Dark Sky Movement, where there have been numerous studies to highlight how we want to limit the lighting at nighttime, because it affects wildlife, it affects the plants, and we want to be as kind as possible. So if we can choose the downward-facing one, with Zero's permission and the board's permission, that's what I would try to nudge it towards, in terms of being kind to nature, being kind to the sky. Because city lights travel hundreds of miles, and that is part of the movement. We are trying to minimize it.
I just want to confirm, thus candidate one listed on this plan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Else? Commissioner Ding, vice chair, anything?
Just to confirm, because I, sorry, beautiful presentation, to you also.
Everybody.
Everybody? It takes a lot. What I was going to ask was for, I wanted to quickly discuss the waiver. So in lieu of a solid masonry, the idea is to do wood.
Or green hedge, green hedge and wood.
Okay. And shorter, in lieu of eight, it's seven feet tall. Yes?
Can I correct? Yeah, the reason it's for the seven feet is because that's under the code, seven feet is allowed by right. If it's any taller than seven feet for a wood fence, the way our code reads, it requires a minor-use permit to get taller fences.
I know, I know.
But since, I mean, we're before the commission, I mean, you can make a call.
The thing that usually when fences are done for privacy reasons, but also speaking of sound attenuation, I looked at the equipment. The equipment with the pad goes no higher than six. So it's far below the eight and the seven. So I did want, I noticed, I mean, that must have been a big deal for the DRC to require that. And then the last question I was going to ask is, normally when we're doing, when I do site lighting, I usually have a photometric designed to kind of see the mid-max and the average. Because I completely agree with you. The first thing that came to my mind was, you have safety, there's different regulations, right, of building lighting versus lighting in parking lots, right? But you also don't want to disturb the neighbors. So was there, is there an understanding of the placement of the lights and then the leeching out of the...
I'm hoping to have that conversation for the...
Yeah, because, because Walnut Creek does have lighting standards, right, for different foot candles? Right?
Ryan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the photometric studies, yeah, for anything on the, not on-site, but in the public right of way.
There's nothing on-site required? Okay, not even for safety from the building department? Okay, I could have sworn the building official required that, but I agree with you that you don't want to have something so egregious that it then affects the neighbors, but you still want something to be so that you're safe. And having design developments, residential developments, there's like a beautiful balance where you can almost also use the lighting to calculate your foot candles, even for the lighting off the building itself. So that was kind of my two cents for that. That was, sorry, sorry, that was my questions. Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Moran.
Thank you. I really, really liked the design of the building and the thought that went into it. I didn't see the philosophy of the front-facing mountains and the back-facing forests, and I thought that was really interesting, and I appreciate that. My question is kind of regarding the general, the community, which you hope to serve. And I know that there's like, I'm looking at the sample day-to-day operations, and specifically, I'm interested in the after-school type programming. What is the, do you guys see, have you done any studies about the demand or the community which you might serve? And I'm kind of leading the witness here, because what I think is, you have is a brand-new, beautiful building, and I would encourage you to think about the larger community that you could serve, right? There's different STEM classes and Mandarin classes and so forth, but, you know, there, it's, I wouldn't think, and I assume that you're not limited to just the Taiwanese community in the East Bay, but just the broader community, you know, in the East Bay, right? With people who might be interested in sending their kids to an after-school class for STEM, right? They may not speak Mandarin, or maybe they're interested in speaking Mandarin. And this is just less of a question than a comment, but if anybody wants to get up and speak to this, but I am curious about the broader Taiwanese community in the East Bay and how you guys see yourselves serving them. And I would also just encourage you to think, you know, with bigger goals, because you'll have a nice new building that you can bring in people, whether they speak Mandarin, are Taiwanese, you know, you've got, you're in a residential area, people can send their kids right down the street for after-school programs. So if anyone wants to speak to that, that's great, but that would just be my thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. As you know, I really start the whole thing, but I've been through, I've been starting from one zero to nothing for four corporations in Taiwan. So it's very important to maintain the cash flow, you know? Maintain the, you know, I don't, hopefully, anybody get this building, don't have to go out to raise money all the time. This is my experience, I mean, if you look at my credentials. Anyway, one of the things we want to offer after-school is this, because my grandchildren, I have so many grandchildren, they all went through this after-school program. One of the things they done is that, learned robotics, then some computer programming, and they had to pay some fee for that. So our intention besides teaching language, so on, you can collect the money for teaching, for growing up, for teaching Taiwanese, actually, Taiwan government offered that kind of assistance. But for the general after-school program, we'd like to offer something that useful right now. I mean, my grandchildren just went through that, from sixth grader to all the way to the high school, they all went through this kind of program, they had to pay something to learn those things. So we intend to offer that kind of class. We have four classrooms, to answer your question. I want to make sure that maintains, you know, income and cost balance.
Thank you for the great feedback. We actually ran four workshop last year, and it's about robotics. And then it was quickly filled up, but we set a limit to 25 kids only, because we don't want to disturb the neighbors, because it's a lot of traffic. And then I observed that the parents, they did park, and then they walked the kids to the class. So that's a good sign. And then we could, but the thing is, we could not offer too many of this, because the building itself is kind of old. So hopefully, with this new building being built, we can even offer more to the local community. Yes, we do realize there's a residential area, and then we are there to help, not just Taiwanese-American, but to all the residential residents who live around that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as somebody who is involved with a number of other LEED projects, and also the general contractor, we are open to working with certain people, such as board members. We're lucky that we have a talent of board members that have experience in demolition. We could do it mindfully, so we divert from landfill. We have a landscaper, so we could think about bio swales, so that it actually makes flood control happy, it makes the water board happy. We plan to make a lot of agencies happy and still stay within budget. So we're just trying to be mindful, to have these conversations as early as possible with that S-curve, you know, before hockey sticks up and then it gets expensive. So it's just important to have a lot of these conversations upfront. We also, I got permission from the board to welcome university students to be part of this process, and if they want to even present to you, it's also an experience for them in a real-world project. So that's another extension of the education component that goes beyond Walnut Creek. It's any university student that wants to come, participate, and be part of the research on what some of the best solutions and best practices are for being part of the climate change, sustainability, and environmental stewards.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a detail. So my understanding now is the Cultural Center is currently an existing organization without a permanent building, or are they meeting in the existing building that's going to be demolished? I wasn't sure if I got that detail.
Well, this particular organization was formed specifically for this new construction. So informally, there has always been a group of Taiwanese who are organizing these classes and whatnot, but they never have a permanent home. They, basically, they are borrowing the space of the church, which is the social hall building right next to this building. Did I answer your question?
Yes, yes.
So the organization itself was founded specifically for the construction and the design of this new building.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Kound.
I wanted to go back to the fence waiver and just say, from me personally, seven-foot seems like a reasonable accommodation, but I wanted to ask a question about the comment that was made about wood or greenery, the existing hedge. My experience, hedges get thin, die, don't always provide the kind of noise and privacy that we want. So I would recommend that it be both a wood fence and the hedge, to keep the hedge, but, yeah, so that would be my thinking.
This question, the hedge, again, I hope Commissioner can visit our site. Right now, there are such a beautiful green hedge, about eight, nine feet tall, so beautiful. And between our building and next door, about 70 feet. That hedge is so beautiful. How come we want to build another wooden hedge? Just, to me, it's completely not really, it's just, please, please, visit that. See the hedge, what we have, it's very tall, very tree. So for this issue, I'd really please asking you, anybody question about, go to visit us. Just very tall, very beautiful, and there's so much distance between two buildings. Oh, yeah, yeah. Look, look, so tall, nine feet, and all the way to Sunnyvale, I'm near. The beauty of the hedge is there.
Thank you. Commissioner Kound.
I just had another question come to mind when you're talking about the existing social hall, and when I did go and walk the site, I saw the social hall and then like the sort of playground area and then the grass, right? So is that going to be part of your usage, or is that only for the church? The social hall as well as the outdoor play area?
It's going to be for everyone who goes to this area, so for everyone to use the social hall. Thank you.
All right, very good. Then I will open the public hearing to...
Sorry, can I make a comment, please? I have a rendering in here, not related to this project, but it's next door. This is a new, I believe I mentioned this in my staff report as well, that there will be a new proposed development next door to the east, the fence-in-question location. As you can see, they're going to put the drive aisle closest to this community center, and the house, eight new houses will be set on the opposite side. But keeping the hedge, just like Commissioner Kound mentioned, one, it doesn't really classify as a buffer, right? I mean, it's great, it looks beautiful, but once this develops, it would, it would be great if it could stay, but with this new development coming, that's not going to stay. So we're going to need something solid to really create that separation between the two uses.
Thank you. If anybody in the public would like to speak on this matter, welcome to do so.
The building is eight units, as I understand, right? So total square foot, it must be more than maybe 100, 20, 20,000 square foot? Our building is only 45 square foot. So if we want to, any hedge and any, maybe we can join together, spend the money. Why I have to spend money for this?
That's great, and I did mention to the architect that he could reach out to the developer. Not sure if that happened.
Yes. Is there anybody in the public would like to speak on this matter? Can come forward, and you have two minutes. I don't see a large crowd clamoring to do so. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion. Planning Commission. Commissioner Kound.
All right, I'm very happy to see this presentation. I think it's a, it'll be a great addition to the city and to the fabric of the city, as well as the social, the benefits to the community, both the Taiwanese community and... the benefits to the community, um, both the Taiwanese community and the American community. Um, as for the fence, I do like the seven-foot wooden option. I think we can go with that. And for the lighting, I would prefer, uh, the first option.
Commissioner Klopp?
And before, before we make a motion, I actually wanted to say there was staff, there was a staff oversight. Uh, there are some standard conditions of approval for the engineering department. My fellow colleague, Ryan Cook, brought that to my attention. And he has a copy of those conditions, but we would need to incorporate that into this as we're adopting this, um, resolution tonight.
Do you know what those are? I mean,
Yes, we have a copy.
You gotta tell the engineer.
Thank you. And I apologize, that was staff's oversight.
No, it's one copy. This looks, yeah. Okay.
I think probably the important part is it's, it's standard conditions.
Engineering conditions of approval, they're about permits, title reports, sidewalk, damage, yeah, maybe just give it a summary. Yeah, you be, you be the expert.
Do my job. Um, erosion control, which is important. Um, engineers' cost estimate, which is always needed, um, especially since I saw that there was some site, off-site improvements required. So, no- normally you need a, um, a bond or something when you're doing work in the, in the public right-of-way. Um, drainage fee, which that's very normal, um, photo, oh, there it is, photometric study. Um, power poles, utility structures, grading drainage and stormwater. So, uh, essentially requiring overland release. This is very standard for C-three, so hydro modification for post-project stormwater peak flows, soils report, post-construction, um, see, again, C-three, sorry, to make sure the water's clean. I'm saying C-three like everybody knows that. Um, stormwater treatment facilities, traffic control plan, which is great, especially during the construction. Um, parking layout, tree removals, tree protection zones, trash enclosures, um, separate permitting. Perfect. For any other, um, additional agency that's required, such as the sewer district, East Bay Mud, um, for water, Contra Costa, PG&E. And then work hours to not disturb the neighbors, which is very, very important. Um, tho- those are the main, that's the gist of it.
Just to be clear again, these are standard conditions that call on any project like this.
And they would be added to their resolution?
Correct. But before we do that, if I can, um, I just, in talking with Simra, I understand that she's talked about these conditions with the applicant. Um, and they're aware. So, I just, I just wanted to see if the applicant, um, ha- has any comments, or if you understand, or if you would like some time to review them.
Now, un- unless I'm mistaken, I, I believe some of these, um, things that you mentioned would be part of the requirements for the site development permits, which we assume would basically come after the entitlement. Uh, that is our, basically that is on our agenda. The, uh, basically what we're planning to do is to develop the site development permit application, as well as a building permit application together, after we obtain our entitlements.
Okay, so you're agreeing with the, you're aware, agree with the conditions. Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, the engineering conditions in the draft resolution, starting with number twelve through number twenty-two, is this, or is what you're talking about in addition to those items on the resolution?
I'll have, uh, Ryan Cook come up and explain that.
Sorry, should've probably come up a little sooner. Uh, Ryan Cook, senior engineer with the city. So, the, the conditions that are in the draft resolution now, there's like four of them. Um, they're very basic and I'm not exactly sure where the overlook was in those. Uh, they are basically duplicated within the revised conditions that we just provided. Um, and as, uh, Commissioner Niding had pointed out, it's all pretty standard stuff. Um, there's nothing really specific to this project that's out of the ordinary. Uh, mostly all related to our current permitting, stormwater compliance, um, and other standard engineering requirements, uh, so.
Okay, so this would be replacing the, or in addition to the engineering conditions section? I don't know if you wanna pull that up on the screen of the draft resolution?
You could either replace it or just amend it too, cause it's a little bit of duplication, but there's nothing conflicting with it.
Some of them are the same as what she mentioned, yeah.
Yeah, no- nothing conflicting though.
Okay, okay.
So, Claire, you might need to help us word the resolution.
So, we could, those can be incorporated into the resolution to the extent that they don't duplicate each other.
Any other discussion or a motion? Go ahead.
Um, hopefully I get it right with the addition. Um, I, I propose adopt the conditional use permanent design review application number Y twenty-four dash zero seven-seven, um, with additional engineering conditions that, and
Oh, the fence and the lighting.
And, and, um, option one of the lighting and the seven-foot fence in lieu of the eight-foot fence.
Okay, so my, so just to add to that, so my recommendation is on the lighting condition where it says it faces downwards?
Yes.
To specify that it's the number-one design that is presented tonight.
And to specify that it says the downward lighting.
Correct.
Okay.
Second. Resolution with all of that.
Question on the motion. You, the fence is going to be seven-foot and wood?
Wood, not in lieu of masonry.
Okay, good.
Should I, should I, do I, should I repeat it? You guys got it, right?
And second question, are we not supposed to approve, uh, the church as well as the CUP? Because it was non-conforming?
That's correct. That's one of the conditional use permits for you tonight.
Right, the resolution would do.
Yeah, it's in the, it's already in there.
Okay, thank you.
They're all in there. Alright, any further discussion on the motion?
Okay, so the motion did include adopting the draft resolution and exempt from CEQA and the three conditional use permits.
With the modified conditions, with the fence seven-foot tall wood and the lighting facing downwards, but design number one as presented today.
Thank you.
Alright, if everybody understands, we got going here, um, I'd ask, uh, for the roll, yes.
Vice Chair Niding?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Moran?
Yes.
Commissioner Count?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
And Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, seven oh.
Thank you all very much. Uh, this, this was a, uh, marvelous, uh, presentation. Um, obviously, a lot of work went into getting this far, but also in presenting it to us so that we could understand it. I also appreciate, um, your response to design review, that you took their, their suggestions and worked out, you know, a, a good solution to each of them. Um, this is, uh, it's rare that we get a project of this size that doesn't have a lot more questions with it, so. Um, excellent job and, um, look forward to, uh, seeing it go up. Thank you very much. I'm sure I officially closed the public hearing, so that, we'll do that now. And, uh, we're onto on item five, Commissioner considerations. Or Commissioner considerations.
Alright, um, so, this past Monday, I had a second working group with the sign ordinance update. And so, we, um, heard from the contractor about what the, what had happened since we met in January. So, a survey went out to the business community, asking what were the needs, um, regarding the sign, existing sign ordinance, and what they would like to see in terms of modernize, modernizing it and, um, adapting it to the current needs of the business community. There were, um, twenty-three responses to this survey. And of those twenty-three responses, seventeen were businesses and six were commercial property owners. A lot of the common themes and the results of the survey, the feedback from the business community, were, um, looking at the visibility and location of signs for the businesses. Um, looking at the A-frame signs, so I call these sandwich boards, these are ones I typically see on the, on the ground that are put out in front of businesses. Looking at the size and the dimensions and the designs of the signs, and also looking at the process improvements, uh, for the applicants when they're applying for the signs. Um, so, the contractor has heard our feedback and is going back to, um, drafting an ordinance. And so, I will have an update for you next time we come back together.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Klopp?
Uh, so, the, uh, Contra Costa Transpac Group, uh, met. That's the, uh, subgroup of, uh, Contra Costa Transportation Authority that looks at our geographic area. The two items on the agenda, uh, this week, meetings, were trying to figure out how to expand the class pass or bus rider program for students beyond the current sort of limited two-to-three-month thing into a more, uh, expanded program. It's, it runs into barriers that are sort of inter-group, agency coordination and funding. Um, so there's a lot of ideas and frustration about the opportunity to expand it. So, they're still tilting at windmills to do that. Uh, the second thing was a report out on the, um, Contra, Contra, Contra Costa Transportation Agency plans for Measure J, uh, in the next five to seven years. Measure Je- J is a tax, sales tax, um, uh, thing, fund, um, that, um, is getting towards the last sort of third of its life. Um, and the projects that are underway, um, with current funding in our central jurisdiction are the I-six-eighty, uh, State Route Four interchange. Um, there's, uh, work on the carpool lanes on I-six-eighty and a lot of the BART parking, access improvement, gates, et cetera, have been funded by that as well. So, that's what's on the docket.
Question on that?
At some point, I heard that they were going to sup- propose a change to the on-ramp of going north on, um, I guess it was Lawrence Avenue Way, uh, and that's make it a braid so that the people exiting to treat and Gary would be not impacting each other?
It could be. That's a project that isn't flagging in my memory right now, but it's not a Measure J project.
Okay.
So, I, I, I'm, I'll keep a ear out for that one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other staff reports or commission reports?
I'll just say for the record that, um, we have a, um, Planning Commission meeting on October ninth, that we have two items that night. So, we have the zoning code amendment for the residential care facilities and, uh, retro junkie design review, um, application. And then, since we are nearing the holiday season, uh, we only have one meeting in November and December. So, we're hoping we have a quorum because we have items on both, uh, agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will, uh, call it adjourned. I'm sorry? Yes. Oh, yeah, that was right, that was right at the beginning. Oh, sorry. Different, uh, agencies do it differently.